Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Cochran.
Well, I do not anticipate there being any obstacles to Warren County Public Schools' request before the planning, commissioning, and council tonight. I do want my fellow councilmen and the public to know I will not be participating in any discussion or vote on this request due to my period of employment with Warren County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cochran. This time I'll turn the meeting over to the Chairman of the Planning Commission, Mr. Douglas Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will start by opening the public hearing for discussion of FRSPU-1801-2020. And the Planning Commission is requested to approve a special use permit submitted by Melody Shepherd on behalf of the property owner, Warren County Public Schools, for the installation of a temporary modular classroom at AS Roads Elementary School located at 224 West Strasburg Road. The location of the property is within the R3 zoning district that requires a special use permit of the property within the R3 zoning district for temporary classrooms pursuant to town code 175 109.1.8. The application includes a preliminary site plan showing the temporary classroom being placed on the existing paved play area to be used during the current renovation project as well as improvements to the grounds of the property. The town staff recommends that the Planning Commission issue a recommendation of approval of the special use permit application with the following conditions. Furthermore, town staff recommends approval of the site plan application for the new temporary building. Additional consideration may need to be given if new information is provided at the scheduled public hearing. The conditions are: number one, this special use permit is authorized to allow the temporary use of a modular classroom at AS Roads Elementary School at 224 West Strasburg Road. Number two, this special use permit shall only be valid for one year from the date of approval by a town council. Town council may authorize an extension of this permit for one additional year if requested by the applicant before expiration. Three, the foundation of the proposed modular classroom shall be started. Number four, the modular classroom shall be removed within 30 days from expiration of this permit or within 30 days from completion of the renovations to AS Elementary School, whichever comes first. Number five, town council or other designated representative may inspect the property at any reasonable time to ensure compliance with local regulations, including but not limited to the conditions placed on this special use permit. Upon inspection of the property, if it's found that the property is not in compliance with local regulations, including but not limited to the conditions of this special use permit, the town may revoke this special use permit after notice to the applicant in a public hearing. The planning commissioners have additional information in their folders, and they may have questions or comments. And also, since it's a public hearing, we invite the public to comment. If you do choose or wish to comment, we would like for you to sign in at the lecture.
I'm Melody Shepherd, 123 Locust Hill Road, Front Oil, Virginia. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Warren County Public Schools and also the Interim Superintendent. And the school board and I would like to thank you for having this joint meeting to consider the special use permit to install modular units at AS Roads Elementary School. As you know, we have been interested in renovating AS Roads Elementary School for some time. We have started with the roof replacement, and that has been completed, and we have removed the asbestos from the school. We are excited to start the renovation and are looking forward to the positive impact this is going to have for the students in our elementary school. So, thank you for the consideration and thank you for the special meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Would it be in order for me to ask a question of this person?
Sure.
All right. Are you comfortable with the conditions of the staff recommendation?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to get a little bit more, a little bit of appreciation of the actual timeline of when this would go into use and how that correlates with, I guess, interior renovations. Could you give us a little bit of that?
So, I have two experts with me. Bill Shalton from NWPR Architects, and then I have Greg Liddley from RRD. He's our Director of Facilities. So, if I am unable to answer the questions, I may defer to them. But our plan is that this is approved tonight, we would be installing the modular units within the next month. So, that would be until March 20th. And then we would start construction March 20th and go, the renovations will be complete sometime in the fall, we're hoping in October. So, then that's when the modular units would be removed, is after the construction is completed. So, we have, you know, an aggressive timeline to get the renovation completed, but we think it's all doable. And our contractor has been secured with LCW of Winchester. So, we're just waiting for the modular units and we get the hand to get the work started.
So, you don't anticipate coming into the 2021 year at all?
We do not.
For that year?
We do not.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did you say that the asbestos has already been removed?
It has been removed. It was removed in the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you tell us about the arrangements for the safety and security of the students and staff while this is going on?
Absolutely. So, 80% of the building will be renovated, so we will have barriers at the, the fourth and fifth grade classrooms will still be in the school, so we will have barriers set up where the students can't get into the construction area. And then we will have our modular units over towards the multipurpose room, so they'll all be congregated in one, in one central location. And we have asked, spoke to the Sheriff's Department, so they're going to do extra patrols, and we're going to have a School Resource Officer there regularly to help with security and safety of our students. Thank you. You're welcome.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes?
Would there be any reason why that you all wouldn't consider putting the bathroom down at the modular unit, since it's so close to 55 and with maybe up to 120 students in the building?
So, the current plan is to have the students use the restrooms in the multipurpose room, but that could be a consideration if it's needed, absolutely.
That's the only concern I really have, is maybe the safety for the children, since that building will be so close to 55 and with, do you know what grades we'd be down there?
In the modular units, probably in second and third.
So, that's, that would be my concern.
Mrs. Shepherd, with the occupancy of the, of the building, will there still be enough restrooms as far as?
Yeah, so I would have heard that too, Greg Liddley. He knows the, is there enough restrooms?
Yes, we will. For the second phase or for the students remaining in the building, there is a set of restrooms on that end of the building. In addition, as we said, the modular, students in the modular classrooms would use the restrooms in the adjacent multipurpose building.
Can you go into the volume?
Okay. I'm sorry. I have a very loud voice, I hope it was carrying, but anyway, yes, we have considered that the students that will be staying in the permanent building during the renovations will have a set of restrooms to use. And again, the proximity of the modular classrooms adjacent to the multipurpose building where the restrooms are at does give us the same number of restrooms that we currently have in the building.
About any concerns to go in? To and from the modular building?
To, yeah.
So, yeah, and I can't see, I can't see somebody out there supervising the whole time with?
Well, as I said, believe it or not, we've had discussions with the school administration at the site, and yes, they will be, because we've had to talk about access to the main building, you know, because the cafeteria will still stay in use along with the media center. And so, students going to and from will have, you know, the school administrators or staff with them at all times.
I understand, one, to and from the cafeteria, they want to go in groups, and the teacher, whatever. But my concern is, one, two, three kids going at a time down to the bathroom and back, like if it wasn't so close to 55, like they have a modular building right behind the school now, which is on, what, 30 feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's my only concern, and I would want to see a bathroom attached to that modular unit.
Okay. We can certainly consider that. I will tell you, we'll add time, one, because of the availability of classrooms from the LEC or the lessor, what he has in his inventory as far as modulars with bathrooms, and two, we'll add additional cost to our already agreed upon contract.
Well, I mean, I beg to say these are more important.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Something we can certainly look at and come back to.
That would be one of my points, that's the only I would for this, if there wasn't bathrooms.
Okay. Okay. One other thing I thought I mentioned with regard to the safety, we also are going to be reversing the actual travel flow for our buses and parent drop off. It's actually going to be reversed at the site, so we can still maintain that separation between the two. And, you know, we'll change our signage when that time comes to make that transition.
I have a question for Ms. Shepherd. These buildings will be put on paved play area. What are you doing to make up for the space in the playground?
So, there's a lot of green area, green space at AS Roads Elementary School where the kids will be utilizing. We have a playground, and then a lot of other green spaces the kids can use to play. And actually, to answer Mr. Holloway's question earlier about restrooms, our younger grades go to the restrooms in groups. They do not go as individuals out of the classroom. So, they would be with a teacher at all times when they go to the restroom. So, our kindergarten, first, second, third grade, it's a monitored activity. It's not, they don't go by themselves individually.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
So, I get your point. I get your concern, but there will be a staff person there with them at all times whenever they're, they're leaving the modular units.
I'll also add to that, one thing I forgot to mention, the existing paved area currently has chain link fence surrounding the entire perimeter. We're not removing all of the chain link fence for the modular units. Around 55 side and the back end of it will remain in place. We just need to remove what I'll call the side closest to the building and adjacent to the gym to be able to get the modules in and assembled.
I have a comment, suggestion. It's a really good time to consult the epidemiologist and nurse at the local health department to assure that you have good plans for infection control among the students and staff, because we have a rise in viral illness and resistant organisms, especially in concrete settings like small children's school systems and with the meals and sanitation. Have you had the health department come give you advice on your flow and on sanitary precautions you should take during the transition and in the new plan?
We have not.
May I suggest that? This is a great time to do it. It'll be built right in, never cheaper, and you'll not be sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. There being no other comments, I will close the public hearing, and we will still be open for discussion among the planning commissioners. Are there any questions or comments by the commissioners? If there's no comment, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of special use permit application, FRSPU number 001801-2020, with the conditions noted in the staff report. I further move that the Planning Commission conditionally approve the site plan application, FRSPU number 001776-2019, subject to approval of a special use permit by a town council.
I second that motion.
Motion is moved and seconded, and we have a polling of the commission.
Chairman Downs?
Yes.
Vice Chairman McFadden? Commissioner Murcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Marshner?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gordon?
Yes.
The Planning Commission part is over. The public hearing is closed. And, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do I have a motion from the town council this time? Do you hear a motion from the council, please?
I move that council approve a special use permit submitted by Melody Shepherd on behalf of Warren County Public Schools for the installation of a temporary modular classroom at AS Roads Elementary School located at 224 West Strasburg Road to be placed on the existing paved play area and to be used during the current renovation project.
Your defense? Motion is seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
To include bathrooms at the modular building as part of the condition.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on the bathrooms this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just think, I just think it's important for us to make sure that we cover all bases with the way society is these days. There's, there are a lot of crazies out there, and it is right by 55. I know the chain link fences want to be there, but I'm just not willing to take that chance having any children unsupervised go to and from the other buildings. And I think it's important to have a restroom in the modular building.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Just I will vote on the amendment. Could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seeland?
Yes.
Councilman Cochran?
Abstain.
Councilman Liddley?
No.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
No.
Councilman Thompson?
No.
The amendment dies. We'll go back to the original motion here at this time. Is there any other, more discussion on the original motion?
Mr. Mayor, just to ask, point of clarification, ask Councilman Thompson if your motion included the staff reports, conditions for the special use permit?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the original motion? It's time to go. Could I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seeland?
Yes.
Councilman Cochran?
Abstain.
Councilman Liddley?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is seconded. All the papers say aye?
Aye. Aye.
This time we'll adjourn our meeting here this evening, and then we'll go to our work session immediately following this.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
What?
Our, is the Planning Commission still in session with that agenda? Because we have not approved our minutes.
I would, I'd like to do that in the next week.
They're not on the agenda for the special meetings.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, they okay? All right, we've adjourned our meeting. We're going to cast a meeting tonight, and we'll adjourn to a work session over in the council. It'll be over here, and then the chairman and the members will be somewhere up the hall on this one. Thank you for coming. I'd like to follow, work session meeting to order at this time. I can turn it over now to our interim town manager, Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I know this is an unconventional way to do work sessions. We appreciate your indulgence in this slight change, but we decided to have a kind of joint open discussion with the CBDG Board. We have various members here with us tonight, as well as Craig Wilson, the consultant that's been with us for quite a while. We need some direction from council, to be candid. I'll give you the good news first and then bad news, and then members of the CBDG, you jump in as you feel necessary, as well as it's an open discussion for council. The good news is, is that after two and a half years of trying to figure out how to do facade grants, I think we finally figured it out. For about two years, we were trying to do labor and material for these grants, and as you know, there's been many discussions, we went through three different bid, bid processes. Finally, the third one, we got one contractor to bid, and to be very candid, the numbers were extraordinarily high, much higher than the estimated prices from the architects. So, about two, three weeks ago, I had a big sit-down meeting with the consultant to try to figure out, are we going to save this facade grant program, or are we just going to go ahead and move on for other activities that it's just not going to be worthwhile to move forward? It was determined that we were allowed to do materials only, so we had to go through the proper approval processes of various levels with the government agencies. And I guess, Greg, did you want to jump in and fill them in on materials only and how the good news is with that?
Sure.
Yeah, the main thing, we've, we've always been allowed to do material only, but it's always, in all these programs, it's always kind of been a secondary business of doing it. What we were asking DACD, Department of Housing and Community Development, is, okay, we're going to have to back up and punt, because we've gotten these bids over and over again and they're too high. Is it okay that we use this as the primary means to tackle these facades? So, we had to clear that with DACD at two different staff levels, and that has been accomplished, and they've been, they've been able to sign off on that. And what they're really signing off is on, is a couple of things, and it's very important to understand what those mean, because the big question was that we put to DACD is, and they've let us do this in the past in small amounts. We're, you know, it's really a matter of degree. We're talking about maybe doing it larger amounts here. In the past, when you, like, if you went and bought windows for your house, you get a quote from the window guy, and he says, you know, $500 a window installed. That's the price, and he doesn't break out labor and materials. So, what we were asking is that we would be able to do the same thing. And what that allows us to then also do is not have to worry about a lot of technical requirements related to labor compliance and wage decisions and all those kind of things. That if the material is, if the windows, doors, storefront windows, awnings, our bid is a set price that includes installation, that's fine. That's considered a materials-only item. We want to make sure DACD, again, was still very much in agreement with that and with, in agreement with the extent to which we would follow that procedure. So, it really has helped to get, you know, DACD's kind of blessing in going in this direction. We probably won't wind up spending as much money, because we're not going to be, you know, doing a lot of labor things. We will also, we've already had a bunch of these bids come in, as Matt has said, and that they were too high, so we already have the designs in place, and there's some items that we just will not be able to do in this regard. I guess, where's Joe's in here, right? Joe Peddinger? We have a couple now. He used the term at our last meeting that works out really well, plug and play. If it's kind of plug and play, put in a window, we're good, and we can call that materials only. When you actually then, if the other, some of the other things that were in these designs were, you know, a contractor would come out and remove this and put in a special piece of wood here, and then put in molding here, you know, the kind of stuff you might think of, well, that gets in back into labor and materials and subject to labor compliance, and we kind of wind up getting right back stuck where we were before. So, some of the improvements that were originally envisioned in the designs, frankly, the ones that were partially raising the price, we won't be able to do, but we should be able to tackle some of these others quite easily. And based on our own look at some of these bids, get it at a much better price. Some prices even just for simple window replacements, we were getting through the bidding process just way out of line with the, but we all can go get on our own and it, through, you know, Anderson Windows, to use an example. So, I think that'll help bring the prices in line as well. One of the things that still will allow us to do, and we talked about this briefly several of us before this meeting, you know, if we do any improvement, we're supposed to improve 20 facades as a part of this grant, that's the target. Some buildings count as two facades, because there are two business bays in the same building, so you kind of get a twofer. As long as we do any improvements to the building, we get to count it. So, we still think it's possible to meet the 20 target that was set as part of the contract with DACD. We will be in a bit of a time crunch, but I think, you know, we can keep pushing and get there. Anybody that's not had a design already drawn, even, you know, that gets in the hopper in a second round, we will have to do a little bit of design, even if it involves just putting up an awning. We think we can get that done fairly easily, because it has to be reviewed by the Board of Architects, reviewed locally, and by the Department of Historic Resources at the state level. But we can do those kind of drawings for simple awning installation, or a window replacement, or a door replacement, that kind of thing, without having to get too detailed, because again, these are hopefully plug and play items, these Joe's terms, I'm going to keep using it. I think, you know, it's a computer term, but it works well in this case to make the distinction between that item that takes a lot of labor on-site versus that which is just, you know, come in and going out, put in a window, and you're done, kind of thing. But I'll, I'm staying, keep answering and helping any way I can, so.
That's the good news. I mean, I think we can, I've talked with Craig, I've talked with some other members. We're going to try to get a meeting with the CBDG Board as soon as possible. We're going to develop new systems to try to expedite this process. We have applicants already in. We're going to identify potential vendors for windows, doors, and awnings. Those are the three critical items that will cover labor and materials, that's the appropriate supplier, and then things like paint and other materials that we can determine are appropriate. So, I'm more optimistic now than I have been about the success of facade, facade bringing out. I think we can pull this off. We still have seven months, but I think we've got to develop systems that we're going to go out and do outreach again, contact the original applicants, get them back in, reprieft them, tell them how we're going to proceed. I already had some conversations with three large properties on Main Street. I've told them the potential about the shift to materials only, and they were very excited to hear this news. They said one person signed up, or is going to sign up as a new potential applicant once we go through the first, first round of applicants. So, I know we've ducked a lot on you. Any questions from council before we move on to the bad news?
Yeah, one thing, Mr. Wilson, you referred to saving money. I don't know how much money you're anticipating or in at all, but can this money be placed on the shelter or the area that you, we're going to plan on building, and would you find the funds to do that?
I'll answer that question very carefully.
I figured you would.
Department of Housing and Community Development will let you make a budget adjustment, particularly when you get this far along in a project, because things do change. And they are also very aware that prices are coming in high on just about any and every project they're involved in across the state because of where we are in the current bid environment. So, I think that would be a possibility. I think what we would want to do is over the next several months, see how what we're talking about doing now goes, and see what kind of money there might be. there might be, but yeah, that could be a possibility, maybe three or four months from now to look at and see where that stands.
Okay, thanks. Matt, you're pleasure.
Yeah, that was a good leadway into the second round discussion, and I left my information in the files, let me get my numbers off just about. We budgeted $130,000 for the, for the pavilion, and that's not included the labor that we were going to supply and some of the other materials that we were going to supply, but the CBDG grant money was $135,000 for the pavilion. Based upon the option that I believe the committee is going to recommend, which was option three, the bid came in at $283,000. So we're $153,000 over budget on the pavilion. And we just need to get a sense from council of what you want to do moving forward as it relates to the pavilion and the restrooms.
When you talk about the shelter and pavilion, does that include the bathrooms, will that be $183,000?
Yes.
Is that the bad news?
That's it. $130,000 for the bad news.
Basically doubled, almost. Actually, more than doubled.
Do y'all have any ideas on where the money may come from?
BJ?
Reserve. Reserves, I mean, that's.
They have to come out of reserves. Mr. Wilson mentioned the possibility, if, if we don't use all of the facade, facade grant money, and we do hit that 20 goal of 20 facades being improved, it's possible that we can get some of that money shifted, so it could be as low as $75,000 out of pocket, or $153,000 depending on where we're at at that point.
Can we, can we put it on, not hold, but can we wait to complete that project since we already know what we want to kind of develop with it, hit the 20 facades and see what we have available? That's number one question, number two is, if it's my recollection, as I was looking through the plans, we modified this a couple of different times, kind of the 11th hour we added, I don't know what you call it.
Gable?
Gable, to it. We changed some structural designs, you know, and I'm not sure if the other options were a bit cheaper.
They were.
That, that might accommodate, so is it possible to wait to see if we can hit the 20 facades, see what's left over, and then whatever we have in that budget, accommodate that with the pavilion?
Yeah, my recollection is, we have, we have about a two-month lead time, is that about right? We have about two months.
For the facades?
No, for the pavilion.
I believe so.
I think we drag it out two months before we start hitting that September 15th.
This has to be done in the seven-month timeframe as well?
Yeah.
Does that include the bathrooms? Does the bathrooms have to be a part of it? Yes, the bathrooms do have to be a part of the pavilion, in order for us to get the grant funding.
So it's not a decision that we have to make tonight, I needed to brief you, I think one of the CBDG here, we do have to have dialogue, conversation, but we're going to make a decision soon.
Mr. Tewitt, you know, when I address somebody or the other, going back to you, to this, the shelter of pavilion and bathrooms, is there any way that you all would, would they consider going out for just a conditional bid on that without the, the actual block rent figures, since it's the David Spaken Act and all those sort of things? Because I have a feeling that you could probably build it cheaper if you just go out for a regular bid and keep it out of the block rent area. Now, I don't know that, but it appears to me that $283,000 is very excessive for a small shelter and these bathrooms. So is there any way possible that you could maybe get another bid without the, all the strings attached to the BDGB grant, and see if we could get a decent bid and then pull it out of the, the grant money?
Yes, but, when this was bid out, even the pavilion, of course, we get back into this thing, the materials and labor, okay?
That's a big thing, sure.
When, when a structure is pretty much fabricated off-site, you know, windows for a facade, doors for a facade, and just installed, they're letting us kind of do that workaround. The pavilion is a workaround also, because the pavilion and all the materials and everything are prepared off-site, they're installed on-site, and the price is what it is. The only labor compliance we might get into is, you know, the one, the bid alternative that, alternate that everybody liked improving, some of the stonework and things like that. And that was so small, when this was sent out and bids were sent in, we didn't even reference the labor compliance and the wage decision. We figured, let's, let's wait and see what you decide to do, and then we'll deal with that issue. So every bid we got, the two bids we did get, did not take that, that into account, so I, I don't think it was a factor in this case. The price frankly did not surprise me, it is about, I've been working on a project down in Sanders Hill just above Charlottesville, and they were doing a pavilion also, and this is pretty much in line with the price they got. And again, in that case, we were able to avoid labor compliance on a vast majority of it, again, because all the materials are prepared, I mean, when you put on a metal roof, all the, it's all cut to fit, off-site and ready, and it's installed. So yeah, I think, I don't know that it would have changed, because we, I think we've been a little careful about that at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Wilson, I also, just for clarification, I think we said $244,000, $245,000, that's without any of the alternates.
That was the base bid, yeah.
Yeah, and I think what was presented to council last time was something more along the lines with all the alternates in there.
Well, it was with alternate three, which includes the gable and the stonework, or the.
The stonework on the bathroom and on the columns.
And on the columns, yeah.
Yeah, so, but that would be, that would take it up well over, or closer to $300,000, right?
It was, that was about $39,000, that bid alternate, number three, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's an important decision as well.
Right, it is. Kind of unusual, the other bid that came in was much higher on the base bid, but all the alternates, they were extremely low, it's kind of weird. That's the bid environment we're in, things can be all over the place these days, you know.
I wanted to, I wanted to make a couple of comments while we had everybody here, mostly for public record too. I'm not going to lie, it's incredibly, I'm sure it is to you all too, but it's incredibly disappointing that for two and a half years, we have zero progress on this, and now we're under the gun with seven months to, to get something done. And I don't remember the exact dates, but twice a year, we've had updates on this as a council, and every time I ask questions in frustration of why aren't we making progress, and I called out the first time when contractors weren't even giving us bids, why that was happening, and then when they gave us bids, why we were overbid on it, and it just seems incredibly frustrating that for two and a half years, we couldn't figure out how to do one facade, one facade. And now we're, we're under the pressure of seven months, and that's just, it's incredibly disappointing, and I know that there's multiple reasons why that might be the case, but I think now we're going to do a seven-month rush to try to get some things done, and it's exciting news, I'm glad we can change out, you know, some of the canopies and the, and the doors and windows, I think that's good news. But even getting to the pavilion, it just seemed like, seems like one oversight after the next has led us to two and a half years of nothing in our CBDG block rent progress. And I'm not on committees, and again, I know I'm sharing your frustration, I'm not saying that to you all, I'm sharing your frustration, but, but it is disappointing. And I, I don't know what, what the options are, I mean, definitely, we have a limited amount of money, and I think that, that's what we have, and.
Again, I really share your sentiments, and can add a lot more of my personal sentiments. It's possible we can get a six-month extension, if in the event we need it, but at some point in the near future, I would say in the next 30 days, you need to process this about the pavilion, and we're going to have a work session to figure out, do you want to take the money out of reserve and do it, is it a necessity, or is it something that we want to punt for another, another time? I mean, you know, think about the amount of money we're spending, I'm not so certain we couldn't go to ourselves, we're close to that for, for $153,000 at some point in the future.
I was just curious, I mean, so this pavilion, everything is going to be pre-cut, prefed, and sent in, is that my understanding?
Including even the bathrooms, they.
Well, wouldn't it be, I mean, to me, it would be cheaper to stick to this, the only thing you would have to get engineered and brought in would be the trusses, and you're talking about the metal with a roof, contractor can spit guttering out, not guttering, but a roof, metal roofing out on a machine right there on the site, instead of having it, you know, pre-cut and all that, seems like it would be cheaper to stick through this whole bit.
Do we even give other contractors, these are the only two contractors that bid on this?
Yes.
Then at which point will we have to vow for this extension, if this needs to?
What point?
Yeah, I mean, this is.
I would say by early summer, I wouldn't wait to, you know, the, the grant deadline currently, as it set out as mid-September, I would not wait to, you know, end of August, but I think, I think by early summer, we have a pretty good idea of what the pace is now with this new way of doing things, so probably early summer.
First of June, last of June?
I would do it, I would do it during the month of June, for sure. That would probably be, go back to some of the earlier questions, an appropriate time as, as we see how things are working out, to talk to them about a budget revision at the same time.
Well, going back to the budget, if, if we would pull the gazebo, shelter, and the bathrooms at this point, what effect would that have on the actual BDGB grant, I think there was a certain, just to put it together, so what effect would that have? I mean, can we, can we use the money up to a point and then let the other money go back into the federal government coffers or however it works, or are we, are we locked in to spend that $700,000?
Well, certainly DA CD's preference would always be for you to spend it, and in fact, our state, for some reason, has actually got a very bad track record right now of money getting spent that is already allocated to these projects, so others are having the same issues. What I understand is we're about the second or third worst state in the union for getting these projects done, for whatever multiple reasons. So there's money getting turned back in right now as we speak, that's, that's a problem that they're encountering. You could still spend all the other funds, their preference for any of these downtown projects, the number one priority is always going to be light elimination facade improvements over these other things, which are kind of extras in a sense. What, and Matt has asked this question a couple of times already, so what if, what if we don't get it, or what if we don't do it, what, what happens? And I say, and I use, this is my term, you have to remember this. You get dinged. You get a letter in an appliance for you who says you did not meet your targets, and that letter goes on file, and you stick it in your files. For the current project, that really doesn't hurt you very much, what it does do perhaps, if you ask for funds in the future, it could, it would be a track record that you don't want to necessarily have, because that would be taken into consideration if you did a future CBDG project, whether it be something like this or a housing project, because that's the other option, to be able to do some housing rehabilitation as well for low to moderate income households. So a lot of communities don't like getting those dings in their record, a letter back in their record, because they do plan on the future, do additional CBDG grant requests, so.
So if, if we don't get this project completed by September the 8th or 9th, whatever the day is, and then you can't get a six-month extension, does that mean that we're going to forfeit the projects that's already in the mill but not completed, or are we going to have to pay back the money that we've already used back to the block rent?
Yeah, you're reimbursed for money you've already expended, so you'll never be in danger of having to pay back money, and that's one of my responsibilities, to make sure we're keeping that in order, because that's the last thing we want to have, is anybody getting sent back money. One of the things we often have to do on a lot of these projects towards the end is actually pre-bas, prepay some bills, just to get the money out of the coffers and get reimbursed for it even as the project is closing out, so we usually make sure that kind of gets worked out at the end. And sometimes they'll even get a, a short extension of a month or two, just to make sure those last contractor bills or whatever gets in and get paid. So we, we usually are fine in, in that regard, but you, you should not be in any danger of having to send any money back, and again, that's one of my responsibilities, help, help make sure you're doing it.
So, so if we don't meet our, our target goals for phase one, is phase two in January?
I'll be real careful how I say this, for the most part, there is not a phase two for a downtown project. The, the original leadership provided to this project by an outside agency, not my firm, was inaccurate in that regard. So it is, it is kind of a one-time thing, now, that's not saying seven, eight, nine, 10 years from now, you get another downtown grant, but for the most part, you're not going to be able to ask for an additional $700,000 a year from now, that is, that is just not how it works. And I think some of the previous leadership from the outside agency was a little, they misunderstood that, I think there's some bad guidance.
I heard that there was a phase two, that we were.
We were told there's phase two, phase three.
Yeah, especially when we were told.
Again, a few years out, not a problem, a year from now, no, that's not, that's fake. $700,000 isn't a lot of money, but they expect you to get everything done with that $700,000 that's within your project area. Now, you could have another project area or a whole other project and make an application, that's certainly very likely, very possible.
Mr. Wilson, one of the other things that was, I think, a bit of a deterrent for property owners was they would have to come up with a considerable amount of money too, I mean, as part of a match to, to do the project, so with this kind of new plug-and-play strategy, do they still have to come up with funds to do the windows and the doors, is it a certain percentage?
They would still have to match it, of course, their match would be lower, and certainly when they saw those bid, bid numbers come in, scared the socks off of them in terms of, there's no way they can match some of those large numbers.
Right, yeah.
So it, it would be less of a match this time around, and hopefully more doable by most of them. There is always the option, let's say we're doing $10,000 worth of windows and doors, they could pay half and they've met the match right there, so they still get $5,000 out of the 10. So I, I, I think with it being done as, as a plug-and-play, materials only, I think, I think folks will be more easily able to meet their match.
But then they have to do it as a full 50/50 match?
That's one of the requirements from the state, yes.
But is it the match, can they have done any renovations from 2015?
Yeah, it comes from when with us, when you first started working on this project, which now has gotten way in rear-view mirror forward, and includes any improvements to the building, whether it's interior or exterior, you know, our, our work on the exterior is something you could see from a public right-of-way, their improvements could be anything, as long as it's permanent improvement of the building. It can't be, you know, shelves and things like that, but for the most part, even heavy-duty restaurant equipment, things like that, we kind of call that permanent, because most of the times, once that goes in, it ain't coming back out.
When, when did that change?
Which is that?
Everything you just said, because in the last update we had in town councils, there were very specific questions we asked, and it was, no, you cannot go back in time.
Oh, well, now that might have been, you cannot, we cannot pay people for improvements they've done in the past, that is not allowed.
We were told it. Wait, say it again, so you said 2015?
They can, they can count that towards their match, any improvement.
Count towards the match, yeah.
But we can't pay them for those improvements, and the agency that was helping.
If they do a new improvement, they can count what they've done in the past towards their match for the improvement, yeah. How is that being communicated to, to the business owners?
When they make their application, it's a part of the application process, and we encourage them to bring in receipts and things to back that up initially, I think some of them are already in the files, others will still have to scramble and get their, their match. And of course, if we do just an awning and it's $3,500, they may have more than enough match already in the files for that matter.
So, so everybody's clear then, that if they've done a project in the past, they can use that money as credit towards their match?
Yes.
To do any kind of new projects, and everybody's clear on that?
Yeah, I think that, I think that can be very clear, it was, I will say this again, the agency that was helping originally had given the impression that we could pay for work done in the past, and that's, that's strictly not allowed. And I made that clear the first time I met the building owners, which got a couple mad, a lot to say, but I realized that the stake had been made, and I made sure the first time I met the property, we had a meeting and they were all invited, I made sure that was clarified right away, because the, the state can't obligate money for something that was done before the grant, before the town was ever in the contract, just can't be done, I mean, that, in some ways would almost be, I guess, illegal.
But in essence, you could get credit for that work.
But you could get credit for that work in terms of your match, sure.
So, Mr. Wilson, one thing, I was just more of an observation, but all, all the bills, oh, sorry, I thought it was, look in your own way. We, if all the bids, not just in our community, but in other communities, right, you're saying, all over, the bids are high, and that could possibly be from the economy we're in, I mean, people that would be doing these types of buildings, you know, they're really not probably sure on work right now, so, you know, supply and demand, if they, a small project like this, while it seems like a lot to us, they might not be making a lot of money off of it, so that, one thing Mayor Tiwalt says, could we, could we do it cheap? So, uh, one thing Mayor Tewalt says is, could we, could we do it cheaper? I don't know, and then we would give up the hundred, and I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm still learning about this, uh, and I'm not going to try to say the initials, because I'm sure I'll spin wrong, but, um, we would give up the hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so, and if we tried to do it on our own, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't get any kind of money from the grant if we, if the town.
Well, no, if you did it on your own, you still could use the funds for materials only. Of course, again, most, you know, labor is a big part of any project. Um, but the materials for the, the pavilion and the bathrooms, that's not cheap stuff, especially when you're talking about, you know, um, structured timbers and everything, that, that's not cheap, so it, you could still do that.
So, Mr. Wilson, so if we did it on our own, materials only?
I quit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, materials only, um, whatever the contractor charged us for materials, what we would pay, so they could actually build their labor into the material, cost of material?
Well, I said that already is in the bid, that's the answer to the mayor a few minutes ago, because we did not in the bid documents that went out, reference the labor compliance, the wage decision, because we knew, uh, DACD in the past has let us count things like this, again, fabricated off-site, installed on-site, as materials only. Uh, so again, I don't know if you'll get a better price, you might. Uh, I think the save, the savings.
I would say we would have, yes.
The savings would be if you did it with your own workforce. And then, then you, you know, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for materials would go quite a distance if you did the whole thing with your own workforce.
Yeah, because to me, it's like, uh, three hundred thousand dollars just for a shelter and a couple of bathrooms is pretty excessive to me.
Well, and, 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 Captain Cockrell, you know, that's, that's, that's the, that's the bid answer. Guys, the contractors are busy, they go build a house and, you know, set up a three fifty. Why, why do these small projects?
Well, that's because they're approved, they're approved contractors to do these projects, correct?
Yeah, they get a bit so busy, so.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're making big bucks. I mean, you know, when we were saying she didn't know that they were really making out that well, but I guarantee you, they're making out really, really well.
Bill?
Mr. Seawright.
My turn. I get to do the cleanup.
He has his hand raised.
The, uh, I haven't heard you say anything about the signs. Where are we at with that?
Um, gentlemen, gentlemen, it's more about it, they're the, all, all the findings, all the design marks, but not at VDOT now.
Are we on, are we on budget and on time?
Just wait, the week of signing, wait, wait.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but I'm a building owner, and I just wanted to clarify one thing, which is that there was only one contractor who bid. There weren't several contractors.
Go to the podium, please.
I'm sorry?
Go to the podium.
Oh, okay. I just, my name is Melissa Ichiyuji. Uh, I'm a building owner on Main Street, two twenty-one East Main Street. And I just wanted to make one clarification, um, Mrs. Cockrell, you mentioned that there may have been several contractors that bid and that they were all high.
No, I said there were several, he was mentioning several communities that had, that the bids had been high on many things that had come up.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's okay, understood, I just wanted to clarify that there really was only one contractor, so.
I think that actually has been thrown around, there are multiple contractors, so I think you're right in what you're saying.
All right.
Um, and you're saying that there's only one?
One.
Oh, they never bid?
They never bid, and they were astronomically high.
Matt, there's a gentleman back here wanting to say.
Thank you.
Scott, I'm, I'm with, uh, if you're getting ready, I was with one of the bidders on project for the pavilion. I just wanted to clarify some of the, some of the, the quotes that we got in. Uh, for the bathroom alone, uh, I was anywhere from a hundred and eight thousand dollars to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for the bathroom alone, just to clarify. A couple of little things. The pavilion itself came in from four, four different, uh, manufacturers, and that was anywhere between sixty and ninety thousand dollars, just to. Clarify just a couple of little things.
Well, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, you can relax.
Now, we're going back to the signs, because we had an update on that, are we on time, on budget?
So currently, we've been working, so I'm at Chopati, I'm with the county, I'm like our liaison as part of this group. And Ms. Logan, uh, planning director, we all met, and still, like, we went through that design. It's currently with VDOT, they do have to go through those designs to make sure it's a cohesive look. It is partnership that's with the county and the town, and it is on time at this moment. VDOT is working diligently to get it to us quicker, uh, because they understand that there is a deadline. So as of right now, we are on schedule with that, and we have expressed interest to make sure we're getting the town ones done before the county, because there is that deadline. So there, we are working, um, again, Ms. Logan has been working with town staff and the designers to get that done. So we are, as far as the budget, um, with BJ and Mr. Teager, um, but as far as the schedule, we are on schedule to meet the deadline, so we.
Schedule date?
We've given them the deadline of Sep, the September date for the town. Um, and I believe the town is going to be installing yours, correct?
Yes, the town is doing installs for our signage.
Okay. That leaves the next question. Our matching funds for the town respecting, that was, I'm holding a number in my head, like ninety thousand? Where are we at with that?
The, the matching funds that we had set aside just for the CDPG was a hundred and thirty thousand. Currently, we're, we still have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars left.
Say it, say it again.
We have a hundred, hundred, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars left. That's out of the CDPG funds that we had allocated just for town funds toward that, toward the CDPG projects. Um, we also have departmental budgets that will include some of these projects, and that's, uh, one of the aspects that me and Matt will have to work through and get a good handle on that.
Okay. I have a real concern though. Uh, you talked about the outside interests that came to, on this project, a government entity. One of the issues was the Afton Inn. And their change in design of windows. Where do we stand with that? And what happens if the Afton, Afton Inn project fails? In relation to the CDPG?
The, the CDPG project's part of that project was going to be those, the windows, which we had gotten, worked through with DHR and got clearance for the windows. Um, because obviously, that project's a whole lot of money, and, you know, but all we could afford was a number of windows for it. Um, so DHR in particular is very interested in that building, I think you're, you're aware of that. Um, in terms of the CDPG grant, um, I'm not sure it'll make that much difference if that went, and that'd be just one facade that doesn't get done if we don't put the windows in and we go on and use it on another building. Um, DACD is obviously, obviously aware of that building as well, um, and would love to see something happen to it, but I don't think it's going to impact us in terms of their overall grant very much, because I think they recognize how big of an undertaking that is, and they're aware of some of the issues that have taken place related to, you know, these last few months, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Wilson. Uh, I've had someone ask about murals, is that going to be part of materials only, and would that, would that satisfy the labor and materials for mural?
Yeah, I mean, there, there was some funds in the budget to, you know, pay for the, the paints and things like that that might be done on a, on a mural. Any, any way the mural shows up, it's, it can't, however we, it gets done.
Labor?
Um, that's, yeah, that's a tricky one. Um, because, uh, you know, in, in terms of painting, the, the main cost is the labor, not the cost of the paint, so that's one we'll have to handle again. Yeah, because how, how do you value the labor of an artist, I don't, I'm not sure, they would say.
Right.
Uh, Matt, could you, uh, I mean, we could know all about talking about this thing. Could you get all the facts together and then present it to the council, so we do know what's going on, how much money we spent, how are we going to pursue on the size? And, you know, I don't have any size we've already got approved so far, just the ones that have been bleeding, right?
Right.
So I don't know how many more that's eaten in the middle, so, you know.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think that's exactly what we'll do. Um, I think the CDPG felt as if we needed to present this information to council and have an open dialogue, um, as we did tonight. I think it was very provocative, I think clarified some misinformation that had been perceived in the past. Uh, so, uh, we'll do just that, we'll get, we'll get together as a committee. Um, the key is we're going to streamline the process moving forward, we're going to make sure property owners are very clear of what counts towards their match. Uh, we're going to try to find vendors, pre-qualified vendors, to make it easier for the property owners. Um, so we're going to try to really streamline this and execute every step along the way.
Yeah, I was just, the pavilion, just, I'm just curious about that, because I love the design and that, and so, I just, I've been downtown many times, when, um, I would have liked to have found a bathroom that did not involve, you know, asking somebody in the business. Um, when does the, does the pavilion have to be built by this September deadline for us to get any final stream of CDPG, correct?
We could possibly get a grant on extension.
Okay, but still, I guess, okay.
And you also could, again, this goes back to the, the mayor's question earlier, when you get close to the end of one of these projects, extension or not, sometimes what you want to do is say, let's spend the CDPG dollar first, because the grant's about to close out, spend your dollar second.
Okay.
We just line things up in that way to make sure we don't get caught, two things, caught having to send money back, which is that we don't want to do that, but the other thing is not getting a chance to spend the money that you are eligible for, so. Uh, so they typically like to see you spend it, you know, if you've got money in the game on particular piece of the project, spend your dollar while they're spending their dollar, well, when you get to the end, they understand sometimes, we have to front their dollars and you spend yours second. So it might still be under construction, let's say, um, there would not be final closeout of the project then to some months later, when, when it's all done and they can come and say, it's done, and you get final closeout.
I was just asking, just knowing, we wouldn't have a work session again for, you know, when we need to be making decisions if it needed to be built, then it's not going to happen overnight, so.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, again, uh, Matt, is there any way, again, I know you can do it, that keeps us abreast, I don't see a point in meeting for another month, at least bring a sunken in that plan, and meet with, uh, Mr. Wilson, whoever's here on the board, I don't know who's on the board in here tonight. Whoever, whoever's in here on the board, try to, if we can get all these, these questions to ask, it should benefit the council making that decision on the hundred thousand or whatever, whatever amount of money would be left to make that decision on the bathrooms and the shelter. So, uh, we could keep working on that, we, we need to get a closure on this thing somewhere along the line, because this thing, like, like Jay says, it's been, it's been dragging on for two years, or longer, and, you know, so. I've been through this one time in eighty-five, when we got a block ran, it took us two years after the state was closed before we finally did all the paperwork, so. Anyway, it's going to be a long time.
Yeah.
So, uh, anyway, thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else you want to, to add to this one?
Committee members, anything? Committee, thanks for coming out tonight, I hope you're down to get a lot.
Right. All right, let's go to the second item, the, the, which would be the, uh, joint tourism commission. Is that, is that only just?
No, no.
Okay, well, Matt's got it on here, so, let's go back in to the, the, uh, real estate tax.
Okay, the, uh, uh, we need to get an advertisement out for the real estate tax rate, and, um, needed to get some input from council. Be there anything you can do about that, yeah? Um, the, uh.
Just the proposed budget, uh, did include a rate of thirteen cents per one hundred dollars in real estate tax, and that'll increase as far as, uh, per property tax, the real estate tax rate in the proposed budget has had a cent decrease. Um, if council would like to move forward with that, we certainly can, or, uh, we can always advertise at a higher rate, and then they can go lower, we can't go higher than the advertised rate, uh, once we advertise. I just wanted to get some feedback as we direct the council on that receipt.
I need to understand this one with tourism and that sort of thing before I vote on any reduction.
Okay.
What are we doing?
Tourism.
Tourism, what are we doing?
We've set aside two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to determine whether it's going to go to an organization or private firm or some combination. Um, the, uh, uh, the current proposed budget does not have us funding the visitor center. Uh, that's approximately eighty-five thousand dollars, if we decided to continue funding the visitor center, so you could deduct that from the two twenty-five and allocate the rest. Um, I did a, um, analysis of the FY twenty budget, the tourism budget, uh, if you get the, let me grab it in one moment. So the FY twenty budget owes four hundred and nine thousand dollars, um, of which two hundred and thirty-four thousand went just towards salaries. Uh, included two, two full-time, two full-time personnel and four hard time. Uh, forty thousand dollars was the trolley that's in that lineup, that, that apartment. Ninety-five hundred cultural activities, six thousand dollars travels and dues, twenty-two thousand for materials for resale, and eight thousand dollars for furniture and fixtures, leaving eighty-nine thousand dollars to be directly spent on tourism promotion. Uh, of the eighty-nine thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand was for professional services for print design, twenty-six thousand for printing and binding, twenty-two thousand for print advertising, fourteen thousand for co-op advertising, leaving the thirty-four hundred for miscellaneous. So you see, it was heavy on print advertising and professional services and design. So from a four hundred and nine thousand dollar budget, we had about eighty-nine thousand that was actually going out for promotional, um, print advertising, marketing, et cetera. So as far as moving forward, um, there's two steps in this, and, um, uh, tonight or tomorrow, we've got to advertise for the tax rate, and then we're going to have continued work sessions to work through the budget and figure out exactly any amendments, any changes, any modifications. Um, so tonight, you know, we're having to discuss whatever you'd like to discuss regarding the budget, it's probably had it on the agenda. But tonight's the tax rate, uh, we can discuss whatever we'd like to discuss, but throughout the next, uh, April, what is it, April? When do we approve appropriations?
Uh, sorry, don't want to clear here.
I think it's in April, I think the first reading is in April for the appropriations issue.
I would like to, um, I am perfectly comfortable moving forward with the proposed tax rate into Natasha's point. If we're, if we were allocating, you say, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred, two hundred and thirty-five thousand towards tourism?
Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five, and for some reason, the council feels that it, it needs to change, we need to offer funding for it, then I'm okay with that, I just want to stay committed to, um, a reduction in our budget where we have the opportunity to do so. And so then I think that this council needs to do its job and help pick something else that we're willing to give up to make that happen. Um, but I am fully committed to, um, staying the course of, um, advertising at thirteen, thirteen cents, um, and then allowing us the opportunity to deliberate on where this council feels, and if, again, if we want to add something, let's add it, and let's figure out what needs to go out of that budget to make that happen. Um, but staying committed to the reduction of our tax rate.
The only thing I can say, gentlemen, ladies, you saw, if you do put thirteen, then you can't go up, you can always go up and then come back down. But you can't go up after you set a budget, the Monday night will be on the agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Matt, when is the, um, the health insurance, um, assistance supposed to be, um, here? As far as the company, there was going to have a look into that, or?
Yeah, I'm hoping to have my first briefing in about two weeks.
About two weeks.
Prior to, prior to the appropriations, the, the budget approval.
Yeah, I understand that we're not taking advantage of some of the wellness programs that are available, so the insurance consultants will be able to help you with that, correct?
Uh, yes, absolutely, and, and I'm happy to schedule, if you have a specific, um, idea, um, uh, certain knowledge base, I'm happy to schedule a conference call and share that with them, they've been very responsive. I think they've been doing a great job digging into, digging into solutions.
So gentlemen, what do you, what do y'all want to do as far as the Monday night agenda, if you want to leave it at thirteen or drop, drop to thirteen and a half?
I support the thirteen.
I support the thirteen.
I support the thirteen.
I support thirteen as well, put it on the agenda then for thirteen, Matt.
So, let me make sure I'm clear on something, the, the advertisement goes out Friday. So we have to have, it's not, it's not, you're not actually approving the advertisement.
Nothing.
So, the advertise, I'm getting, I'm getting the sense right now, that's when we go out and advertise, just want to make sure we're clear.
You're getting the senses to advertise, but again, uh, we don't have to go on the Monday night's agenda for a final approval before the thirteen cents, which would be the final, thirteen cents will be in our budget figure.
Well, this is for the public, public hearing.
This is just to have the public hearing.
Well, I know, I understand that, but still, it's got to go on the agenda Monday night, correct? Well, I understand that, but still it's got to go along the agenda Monday night, correct?
No, sir, no.
Are you sure?
Yeah, you don't, you don't have to vote to make an advertisement, we just need direction to do the advertising.
Okay, I thought we had to put it on the agenda to say it's thirteen so we can advertise.
No, we just need.
Whatever's the correct way is right.
Yeah, we just need direction and if we want to advertise for thirteen, we can't go up from that. So just to make that clear.
So if we advertise for thirteen, cannot go any higher?
That's correct. We can go lower but not higher.
Right, so if we were to go higher, even if we were to, I'm saying now, if we were to advertise for higher and give citizens the opportunity to come and speak and and to commit to that they want their taxes to be raised, that would be the only, that would be the only benefit to having a higher rate.
Or you get a consensus vote to re-advertise and re-go through the process again.
I'm just asking.
We need to have our tax rate to the commissioner revenues office by April in order to have our tax bills go out on time.
Let's see, we did this, on our timeframe? Yeah, could you clarify the timeframe so?
Yeah, so the, our goal is to have the, our tax rates to the commissioner revenues office by April first is our goal. We may be able to have a little bit of leeway there, but not much. So we are within the constraints that we don't have our rates to the commissioner revenues office, we could delay our tax bills going out and have to change our due dates and things like that.
I mean, you don't make the decision when you do it, but I would advertise for thirteen and a half. And then if you want to change it on the night, we do the public hearing at our first reading, then you drop it to thirteen. At least that gives us enough leeway to know that if somebody changes, we'll have at least a half cent or fifty-five thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, in order to play with it. So to me, I think the smart thing to do would be to go thirteen and a half and then reduce it if you all decide to do that at a later date.
I'm very concerned with the tourists in our budget, the tourist center. I appreciate these dollars that you're showing and I'm very concerned about what I see, the way the expenditures went. I'm really having concern with real dollars that goes out for tourism didn't reflect what I see in these numbers. And that is very concerning. I personally am concerned that people that in the tourist center be kept in hold. And we get a management concern that manages our tourism dollars, but we keep the tourist center intact. I can see that and some real planning to be done for this. And that's been my concern from a lot of citizens. I had twelve people I talked to last week and I've talked to three already this week. And that's a real concern. So I'm on board with that, but I, I appreciate these dollars. It really reflects that our dollars were not really directed in the market where we wanted them to go.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Seale, I think that I understand your sentiments. And there's two other data points that I did not put on the document you received. One is I was informed that zero dollars was spent on digital marketing in this fiscal year. So no, no money was spent directly out of this budget on digital marketing. And BJ and I sat in that meeting when we heard that. And the second data point is that there's forty thousand dollars of current inventory in the visitor center. So there's forty thousand dollars of merchandise, a lot of it still stored in the back room. So I, I did in fact, set the record straight, I did in fact stop any new purchases of new items like jewelry that was in the pipeline and magnets until we started spreading down some of that inventory.
I think that, so there's smarter ways to spend the money and maybe not to the same effect through materials. But like I said before, I mean, even if that's the direction the council wants to go, I think that we've kind of set a course with the proposed budget that council has to this point been around, has kind of been supportive of at the thirteen cents. And again, I'm supportive of advertising thirteen cents and if council wants to change something, I would rather instead of keeping tax rates high or increasing taxes, figure out what other areas the budget need to go. I mean, let's just go back to the beginning, even if we proposed staying the same, if, this is weird not having a round table, so I'm looking down. Chris, you know, I want to stay committed to this, a council to find areas that we're willing to go without or willing to change. So again, if tourism is the hot topic button right now, if that's where council wants to go, fine, but let's, let's figure out what other reduction we have in the budget and stay committed to that. Because I think it's important with some of the changes that we've made, whereas the justifications were reducing some of our tax base, not to find other reasons to spend the money and increase it again. And again, that's why I'm for the thirteen, thirteen cents.
Okay, let's take a consensus there and.
I can go with the thirteen cents for the very reason you just talked about. In your budget preview to us, you showed a half a cent decrease.
Yes, sir.
If we maintain the thirteen, then that, here was my thinking, that fifty, sixty thousand could help us maintain that tourist center.
That's thirteen and a half cents. That's, so thirteen and a half would be the sixty-seven, sixty-four thousand? So, so what I propose was thirteen cents, so as opposed to the current rate of thirteen and a half. The current rate's thirteen and a half, just to clarify.
So we need to make the point here tonight, what are we going to put in newspapers? So let me take the consensus, Lauren, what do you, how do you feel?
I'm, I'm supportive of keeping our taxes the lowest they can, so I'm, I'm fine with thirteen percent if that's, or thirteen cents. Oh, personally.
Hold a damn task thirteen cents.
I'm, I'm looking at thirteen and a half.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, that's three, thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen cents.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And then we can, we can address some of these issues at a later time, right?
Well, we.
How the two hundred and twenty-five thousand work.
Yeah, the big items for me, just go forward. There's three, there's three big items that we still need to have a work session on. One is the water and sewer rates. StanTech, we should have a report back.
Second work session in March.
Second work session in March, thank BJ, I've got too many dates. The, the HR consultants, around that same time period and the, there was a third one, we just lost it. StanTech, health insurance and tourism. In other words, what we're going to do with this tourism marketing budget, how are we going to, there's some, there's some really interesting discussions taking place about that. The joint tourism committee had a meeting last week. I've had some meetings with, I've had one meeting with a private entity that does the marketing for downtown Winchester. I have another meeting scheduled with the gentleman that, that does the, does tourism marketing in various places throughout the Chando Valley, a private entity. And he, this individual practically mapped out, he guessed at a lot of what you see here. Because he's been in, he's been in jurisdictions before and has witnessed what we've, what we've been going through as far as tourism and what we thought was tourism promotion. And so I plan to be meeting with him. So that second meeting in March, I'm hopeful to really have some, some really good meat material for you before we advertise for the public hearing for the appropriations. Any other questions?
Okay, thirteen cents, let's go to the number three, the volunteers for this conference committee.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we've got two volunteers. We have, we have three, we have three scholarships and we have, traditionally we get applications in and they have conversations. And so we just needed some, need to know who's on the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Who wants to reveal this?
Me.
I just want to say that normally we fight you all for that. However, as I was. But I know so many kids that I, we give a scholarship now in my mother's name that I have to select and it's probably one of the hardest things I've ever had to do because a lot of the kids have filtered through the schools and I know them, so I'm just saying, once I've been out and teaching for a long time, then I, I want to be involved.
I'd just say I've done it every year since I've been on council and I would truly be heartbroken if I didn't have the opportunity to do it again.
I want to hear Tosh's pitch now because he's a syllable.
I did it last year, so I was going to maintain.
I'm back in town, I'm back in town.
Okay, so that concludes our actual meeting. Does anybody want to discuss anything you're seeing before we play this?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for us to, I know at the liaison meeting we had talked about our town sticker, about changing the code. So I'd like to see us get moving on it if possible.
Yeah, the liaison meeting, we discussed that, have you heard anything back from anybody?
No, we discussed it in Monday staff meeting, Mr. Mayor, and we're hopeful to have a legal document, we have to amend the code. We're going to go through that process, we should have you something here in the March work session. So we discussed it Monday. There's still, there's still some county, they.
About the dumping, well, that's the thing, you know, and Gene brought it up. What we could do, instead of having our town citizens go to the county for a sticker, we could just, if they want to purchase a sticker for dumping purposes, sell them a five dollar sticker.
If they do it frequently, otherwise they will accept driver's license and registration. So they will accept that. So that's, I think what we're going to do is amend, amend our code and then present it to you at the work session. And then we're going to have also, you know, a policy that we can, we can include it in our electric bills and say, if you frequently dump and you want to make it easier and you're going to show your driver's license, please come down and get a town sticker. And we have seven thousand of them?
Yes.
We have plenty.
Speaking of electric bills, I just want to mention again, we'd like to see some people go out in the electric bill and clarify the recycling. I know we brought that up before because I think some people, some citizens are still under the impression that the recycling boundaries and guidelines are a little stricter than what they are now and have kind of given up recycling. So I think we, I think we really need to, to make sure we communicate to them what, what they need to do. And I'm thinking electric bill, maybe the town Facebook page, anywhere we can get it out there. Because I still hear people saying, no, you have to this and you can't that. And I'm like, no, that's not true, but I can tell everybody.
Yeah, Mr. Gillespie brought that up on the clarifications to me in the last two work sessions. We have been hitting it more on the Facebook and so we'll try to hit it some more as well. And we are in the process of getting, the cycle for getting things put into the electric bills, not as if I can't just, I'd like to move much quicker. But it's challenging to get everything printed and put in and inserted, sometimes there's already things included. So I believe in March, we were planning to hit that up in March as well for recycling. But I will hit more on Facebook and social media.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple, a couple of quick things. Also, Matt, I'm remembering, I think it'd be important as we're discussing our budget to talk about some of the other things that have increased this year in prices like electric rates and water rates. Or we had a conversation about recycling where we're going to have to, I can't remember off the top of my head, spend an extra fifty thousand or forty-five thousand dollars to be able to sustain our recycling program. We've had a lot of one-offs this last year in price increases. And I think that'd be important as we're painting the picture of what we're doing with the budget, of things that we're trying to, trying to equalize with all the other costs that, that are continuing to increase.
So we want to try to come up with a list of the items that were one-off.
I think we had a few already, I think BJ's already kind of, you already done that with like the electrical, we're doing electrical study, electrical rates, are you with the PCA or the?
Yeah, we did the electric, so it was about a year ago. And we'll be doing something again. We'll be doing something again as we move forward with StanTech and the, and water rates.
That's right, and then we added recycling cost, right?
Oh, so for the expense side? Yes, okay, yeah, if you want to see the expense side, yeah, we can certainly.
We added it though.
Yeah, we added, well, I mean, it's going to be a pass for your citizens, right? Well, the refuse rate has not increased, we're not, we're not attempting to.
The cost for us to continue doing recycling program without this council voting to do.
Yes, but we alleviated some other costs in the refuse division to help offset that. So nothing's going on with the garbage rates for fiscal year twenty-one. They're not increasing, decreasing, they're going to remain, remain the same. Electric rates increased last fiscal year and water and sewer rates are the only thing that are being increasing.
On the tail of refuse this time, okay. And then speaking of water and sewer, I don't know, I don't think this is a question for Mr. Tudor, maybe Mr. Napier. But last meeting I asked for us to correspond with Mr. Ramsey on the clarifications that he was asking for. Would that be, were you able to connect with Mr. Ramsey and has that been, has his concerns been satisfied?
We're working on that, putting it all together, we should have that in the next day or two.
Okay, I think we're planning to have, I didn't interrupt you, we're planning to have a meeting with Mr. Ramsey, town attorney, planning and BJ. So we're going to, we're going to bring it in once, we're going to bring it in and just sit down and thoroughly understand because like you, he's, he's confused me a couple of times on exactly what the issue is. And so I think we're going to, we're going to have that in, we're going to hopefully have it in next, well, next week.
I mean, yeah, I'm not a developer, but I've tried to figure it out and I think if it's not, if we're making it that complicated, I should say, then I think it's, you know, deserving of the time to make sure that it's clear as possible for all developers in our community. And so I just want to make sure that we're following up on that for him as well.
Anyway.
With that being your job.